We'll go ahead and get the meeting started. And Mike, would you like to say a pledge of allegiance to the flag, please?
I'd be delighted to do this. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and have a guest speaker. Start to put the podium to speak and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you very much. My name is John Wallace, and I'm a field representative for Cherokee County for Congressman Loudermilk. And I know this is a city that's in two counties, Pickens County and Cherokee County, and the residents from Nelson that are in Cherokee County are represented by Congressman Loudermilk. And the residents, this is a good question, but I guess this will be a learning experience for me, but the residents of Pickens County would either be Graves or Collins, but I don't know which it actually is, and maybe it, because they both represent part of Pickens County, and I don't know which part it actually is. But I just wanted to tell you all a little bit about what we do. You know, we just got through going through a huge campaign season, which we don't have anything to do with. We're, we're, we actually are federal employees, and we do the work of the federal government. In other words, if one of the constituents that lives, either if they live in Pickens and have to go to a different congressman, obviously to get some results, but your congressman's a federal employee and has nothing to do with like the city of Nelson, or the county of Cherokee, or the state of Georgia, but has everything to do with the financing and the organization for the federal government. So to give you a couple of good examples that happen all the time, we have a lot of interaction with the Social Security Administration, because everybody pays into Social Security and receives Social Security at some future date. And also, there's a lot of people that have been in service, and just as a way of remembering, 72 years ago, the allied forces hit the beaches of Normandy on today. And so, people of that age would deserve VA benefits if they weren't, if they didn't think they were getting long time, they could go see their congressman, or either one of their two senators, which do the same thing. Each federal department by law has a small group of people, if it's, now, Social Security is a huge group of people, VA is a huge group of people, inside of those organizations. And the only people they talk to are email back and forth, or write, or written material back and forth, or house staff, and senate staff. Their sole job as congressional liaisons is to talk to us. Our people in our office get to know these people on a first-name basis. So, like I said, that's the two main, that's the two big things, Social Security and VA, but also some smaller things that people don't know about. I had a lady, I used to work, after I retired from traveling, I used to travel for an international company, but I've always been involved in the political world. And so, I actually knew Congressman Gingrich when he was just a medical doctor and on the, on the school board down in the area. And I knew Congressman Loudermilk when he was, ran his IT business over in Carlsville, and he was just the county Republican chairman for Bartow County. So, I'm saying that to say this, that what I, what I do in the office, what I did for Congressman Gingrich, was I did, I went to meetings like this, and I also did casework. And that's what we call, if you come in and you've got a, let's say you've got a complaint with the Department of Agriculture, there's a little group of people inside the Department of Agriculture, and we got a book in our file drawer, we just pull it out, you say, "I got a problem, they didn't pay me a subsidy they were supposed to pay me for such and such." We just look in there, and there'd be a person's name in there, the Department of Agriculture. And we would just call them up, and say, "You know, this is the 11th Congressional District of Georgia, and here's my name, and we're going to fact you this case." It is called a congressional inquiry, so it's a pretty big deal. In fact, one of the guys from Cherokee that was a Westport graduate, was in, one of his duties at some point was in the Pentagon, and he was with a small group of people, and they responded to requests from congressional people about problems in the Army, or, in his case, it would have been the Army since he was in the Army, but if he was in the Marine Corps, whatever, there would be different people up there that would respond to it. And he said, their orders were, have a response within 24 hours of receiving the call, so it's taken seriously. So if y'all have a problem, and I'll give you an example, this is something that doesn't happen very often, but it may happen to y'all, or it may happen to somebody you know. There was a lady, apparently, I don't know if she lived in our congressional district, but her sister did, and she won a sales trip. Everybody in their office, you know, they outsold, I don't know if it was Insurance Office or what it was, but they outsold all the, everybody else in their company, and they got a free trip to Acapulco. And you know, when you go down to those vacations like that, they try to get you, go rent a moped and go hang gliding, you know, the hang gliders behind the boats. And she did all that, but the problem was, when she got on the moped, some local person forgot to stop at a stop sign and ran over. And you can imagine, a pickup truck hitting somebody on a moped, she ended up in the hospital, very seriously. And so, the rest of her staff was down there on vacation, but at the end of the week, they had to come back to wherever they were from, in the United States, but had to come back. And so, she called her sister and said, "I want to be down here for four or five more days," and the sister said, "Well, just take off, and come down and sit with you, and then I'll fly back with you." And she said, "That'd be great." So she packed her bags, reached in her drawer, get her passport out, stuck it in there, she thought, "Oh, I better look at it." So she opened it up, and it had been expired for a few years. And everybody knows who's got a passport, most time it takes six weeks to get it, the regular way. But there is something that your congressional office and your two senators can do, and they can interseat with you, because there's also a group of people that are in the State Department, that they only answer the calls of the congressional staff. So, you know, if you come in, in that case, that lady had an emergency, she needed to get down there to sit with her sister. So, and she already had a passport, so renewals are a little quicker than her original passports. But anyway, I jumped right on it, turned all the paperwork in, and we had her a passport within two days. And they didn't skip anything on it, it's just a matter of, they basically hand-carried it from you to you to you to you to you, and it was in the, and you, another thing too, it didn't go in the mail. She had to drive down to Atlanta to get it. That saved, you know, two or three days of mailing. But, that's the kind of work we do. Like I said, it's not with the Nelson government, if you've got a problem with the Nelson government, I'm sure you can show up here and talk to these fine folks. Cherokee County or Pickens County, you know, you go to those folks, your county commissioner and state, everybody's got state reps and state senators, you go to them. But if you have a problem with the federal government, then you could come to your two U.S. senators, it'd be Johnny Isaacson and David Perdue, or your congressman, in the case of Cherokee County, would be Barry Loudermilk, in the case of Pickens County, would either be Tom Graves or Doug Collins. But anyway, that's, that's what we do. We don't have anything to do with campaigns. I know Jeff from, he knows that I've worked in campaigns, but that's all my own time. My daughter-in-law is, is the DA in Cherokee County, and obviously, I worked on her campaign. I didn't make any money doing that, though. I usually get paid for doing it, but I didn't charge her. But anyway, that's what, everybody, just like everybody has a regular job they go to, but then what they do, they might grow tomatoes and sell them in a tomato stand when they get off from work. But what we do is work for the American people, and it's a lot of little things like that, but Social Security, VA, passports, anything that has to do with the federal government. If you just think about it, if it's a federal problem, just like digging a pond in your backyard, they tell me, you know, it used to be, "Dad, ask anybody, you just got a cat nine back there, dug a big hole, and it rained full, and you're in good shape." But now, you know, you've got federal government, state government, county government, you've got everybody wanting to know what you're doing in your backyard. So, and my dentist, Danny Woodstock, he actually had that problem. He, he used to have a huge lake, and he sold it, sold his property for, you know, growth, economic growth, and then went out and bought a farm, and he thought, "You know what? I had a good pond, a good lake on my farm for my kids, now my grandkids are coming along, I'll just dig another one." And two years later, you know, he was still trying to get all the paperwork. So, if you run into anything like that, that has federal government written all over it, you know, we're your source, and like I said, the same will be true if you live in Pickens County, whether it's either one of your two congressmen, it's no different. But I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate what y'all do, working in, in the city government, and appreciate the constituents. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask me before I sit down? But that, we're on Highway, for the first time, I will say this, for the first time in the history, because y'all are a small county, and we're a small county, first time in the history of Cherokee County, the main congressional office is in Cherokee County. It's down on Highway 92 in Woodstock, what I consider sort of across from the Dairy Queen and McDonald's. You know, on one side of that street is mostly restaurants, other side's mostly banks and office buildings, and we're on the banks and office buildings side. But that is the main, the main congressional office. So if you need service, call before you come, that way you can get an appointment, but that's where we're located if you want to go to a congressional office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the, we have the agenda approval. Miranda, what change did you want to make, if you could?
It was adding him as a guest speaker.
Okay. And then what about the peach state markings? Do you want to change that, or?
Yeah, well, we'll get there, we'll just, I'll explain all of that.
So we need to approve the agenda?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it is?
That's second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. All right. And next, we have the minute approval, and we can start with the May 2nd minutes.
I was kind of watching David to see.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, May 2nd?
That's second.
Okay. Vote to approve the minutes for May 2nd, everyone raise your right hand.
Approved unanimously.
And we can move on to the May 19th, which was the work session minutes for approval.
To make a motion to adopt the minutes of May 19th?
That's second.
Everyone in favor of approving the minutes for the May 19th work session, please raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. And next, we have the department reports, and I'll hand that over to you, Miranda.
All right. All right. First on our report for this month, a new tube has been installed at Kitty Park. We've also completed the approved park upgrades throughout the many park areas in the city. And we've created flower beds and planted some colorful combinations of flowers. Second, we've had several professionals come in to do a walkthrough of recreational building to provide potential operational insight, as well as cost estimates to complete construction on the building to Georgia Code. Among these professionals were Pickens County Rec. Department and Global Restoration, all of which was provided to the city at no cost. We are currently waiting for feedback from them in order to continue building a viable plan that will represent how to move forward with that. We should have those, that information back in the next couple of days, so. And number three is Barton Survey has completed the approved survey as of June 2nd, and we should have the surveys back within two to three weeks. And those surveys will help us start to begin to identify the drainage problems within the city. And then we have our upcoming schedule. Today should be the first reading of the capital improvement plan and the first adoption of the capital improvement plan and the 2017 operating budget. We had our public hearing the last work session in May. And June 16th will be our second reading with our special meeting. And as we go through the meeting, I will go over the fact that we probably need to do a public hearing to adopt the mill rate for 2016 in order to move forward with the Cherokee County tax agreement. And June 16th will also be the second reading for the capital improvement plan and the operating budget. And then July 11th will be, if we, if everything goes well, I'd like to be able to set the mill rate, do the adoption for that on July, July the 11th. And that's all I have.
June 16th, what day is that?
That is on Thursday. That will be our normal work session.
Okay. So we're on target?
Yes, as it stands right now, we are on target.
Good. I already liked the flowers that she already built. I think they look nice.
I've had a lot of positive feedback.
Yeah. I think it really good, gives us a little bit of image.
Gives us a little bit of life, a little color, happiness.
There you go. He's fodder for newspaper to note.
Something happy in him.
Flowers, Dennis, flowers.
All right, well, then I guess we can move on to old business, and we will start with the 2017 budget and capital improvement plan adoption, and that was you, Miranda.
Okay. And the open budget, if you'll look at my summary that I gave you guys, I've included a couple of adjustments that we had to do to the budget. And in May, we had to pay our fire tax to Cherokee County. This year, it has, went up, we are at $80,000 this year for that. The original budget for that was $76,000. I'm thinking that it just really wasn't adjusted correctly when the budget was put in place this year, or adopted. So in return, we need to increase the budget to $81,000 for this expense to reflect it correctly on the upcoming year's budget. Also, I had to make an adjustment to streetlights, that hasn't really been taken into consideration, the expense for that going up in the past two years. So, in order to make that all balance out correctly, I needed to adjust that to $22,000, whereas it's been $19,000 for a couple of years now. But after this month, we'll be over budget in that area. And I have been corresponding with MuniCode, our ordinances have not been updated since 2002. I have got all of the updated stuff into them, all the updated ordinances, and they gave me a price of $4,000, so I incorporated that into our administrative phase for this upcoming year, so we can get that addressed. Something that's been needing to be done for a while now. Other than that, that's the only changes that have happened to the budget, the capital improvement plan is still the same as it was.
Now, the MuniCode, was that in the capital improvement plan, or was that something different?
It, it wasn't a capital plan, but it really is a city general fund issue, something different.
So then what will we do, just remove that out of there?
Yes.
So that it's not this lingering amount that's sitting in there?
Right, it's not a cabinet.
Yes, it's not a cabinet item. And the reason why it was put onto the capital improvement plan, it was actually listed under the general fund part of the capital improvement plan, so basically, we're just taking it out of the general fund.
Okay. And then we're now, do we vote, is this a voting on this, or do we?
Yes, this should be the first vote.
Is it, did your department report tell us that?
No.
No, we've made on old business.
Oh, okay, I didn't move fast enough, it's going too fast. Okay.
All right, so do we want, would you all be comfortable with doing the first vote? We'll separate the budget, and then we'll do the capital improvement, or you want to do those together? I know we normally separate them, don't we?
Probably.
That way we have a definitive.
Yeah. And I did note something on the capital improvement program, which is, I'm sure is just a typo under Parks and Recreation, the pavilion. It's supposed to add up to $90,000, and I think in year 2020, you added in an extra $500 for me, and it should have been just $25,000, instead made it $25,500. And so, we add another $500 to pavilion, so, I'm just, it's supposed, I'm sure it's supposed to be a zero, because that was, pavilion's been in the capital improvement program for three years, and it's always been 90, and I don't know why it leaked up 500, but minor thing.
That's on page 39.
Yeah. Just trying to show that I looked at the information. Other than that, I'm ready to vote, unless there's some other discussion for anyone else, I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the 2017, which one are we doing first, the budget or capital improvement?
Budget's listed first, if you want to start that one.
Budget, okay, the 2017 budget, as presented by the city manager.
That's second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. You unanimously, sorry.
And I'll, to get discussion, I'll make a motion that we adopt the 2017 capital improvement plan, that's presented by the city manager.
That's second.
Did you mean to amend that by removing that capital knowledge you mentioned in?
Oh, I guess, yeah, that's, to be amended to reflect the $500 that we received.
And that's on page 39, I think, right? What was on?
I have it on page 47, but they're all the same. 48, 47 used to sound like.
All right, well, go ahead and open it up for discussion, and any other changes, questions, concerns? Anybody have?
I have any. I feel like I should have something, just to be difficult.
I did want $500.
How many do they have? All right, well, so you want to make the motion as?
I did make a motion to adopt the 2017.
With the amended?
Yeah, with the amended, thank you.
That's second.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Everyone in favor of approving the 2017 capital improvement plan with the amendment, please raise your hand. Approved unanimously. And next, on, an old business is going to be vote to accept resignation of Dr. and Miranda?
Yes, Mr. Thacker, Barton's resignation of last month, and we just need to officially accept it.
I make a motion to accept Mr. Thacker's resignation.
That's second.
Any discussion? All in favor, should I raise your right hand? And C, under six, is vote to approve the peach state markings for striping Pickens Street, and Miranda, you have some changes to do on that?
Yes. Today, I was going over with Mr. Meadows with peach state markings, the pricing that he had given me to confirm everything, and it looks like we didn't get that quote correct. So now, I'm changing this to go with the next better pricing, which is going to be for Cherokee County, at the amount of $5,206.84 versus Peach State was $4,426. But that's the next best pricing. Mr. Meadows came back with a price that was going to be $900 more than Cherokee County, but Cherokee County, we will be paying for our part, and they'll be paying for theirs.
So this one, we don't have to worry about reimbursement?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Reimbursement, okay.
This comes out of Elmwood, right?
Yes, this comes, yes, this is what we need to get completed before June 30th of this month, to close out 2,000 in Elmwood.
Okay. So the error was on his side, was that we did it wrong?
Yeah.
We just calculated something wrong?
Yeah, didn't double his lines. In other words.
Now, will they still be able to do it before our deadline, or?
Yes, I say Cherokee County this morning, or this afternoon.
I make a motion that we adopt the city manager's recommendation for the striping of Pickens Street.
That's second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving Cherokee County to do the striping on Pickens Street, please raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. Okay, and now we are moving on to number seven, new business, and A is to accept the Cherokee County tax agreement. Miranda, you want to go over that?
Yes. Cherokee County has agreed to oversee the property taxes for 2016, being the billing and collecting of the property taxes for Cherokee County's portion. The council just needs to approve and sign this agreement in order to meet the deadlines. They usually have all of their information, their mill rates and everything, in by the end of July, in order to submit them to the state, so we need to move forward with that pretty quick, like. But there is a copy of the agreement in here for you guys to review, if you haven't already.
So do we need to vote on that, or do we need to establish the motion?
Yes, we're going to vote to approve that, and then I also need you guys to sign that and I can freely.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Cherokee tax agreement, as prepared as in the agenda packet to the city manager.
That's second.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, I, I think what Miranda's done here is a good thing. Basically, it's subcontracting out a task that is a lot easier done by the county in its skill level. They're basically taking over all of the management of the collection and the accounting of fees, which is, not that it's a huge burden, but it's a good burden to not have us do. And it's unfortunate, we don't, we don't have a parallel program with Pickens at this point, but getting with Cherokee, I think, sets a good precedent, and I think it's a good reflection. Anywhere we, as a small city, can kind of push up and subcontract those kinds of things, but we don't have all the computer systems and staffing that it takes to be devoted to do all those calculations. So I, I applaud that is a good direction for the city.
And also, it saves money, does it not, Miranda?
Yeah, ultimately, it will, after you factor in the administrative charges on all of it, on our end, plus trying to collect it, postage, paper, you know, all of that, all that. All of those.
All right, well, if, there's no further discussion, everyone, if you are in favor of approving the Cherokee County tax agreement, do, please show by raising your right hand. Approved unanimously. All right, and Miranda, we are, vote to move the July 4th regular meeting to July 11th, if you want to go ahead and explain that briefly.
And July 4th is a major holiday, so we just need to reschedule that meeting to a better time. And July 4th is a major holiday, so we just need to reschedule that meeting to a better time. Then July 11th is the following Monday.
Do we need to vote on that? Okay. Yes, we do. I make a motion to absolutely accept the July 4th date moved over to July 11th.
We don't have the court scheduled that.
You did have that, it's scheduled.
So many people go out of town for July 4th, that's why.
Right.
Works out better that way. Okay, well, we will go ahead.
Did you second it?
Okay. He's on top of it.
He's going.
He's there. Okay, so we will go ahead and place, if you are in favor of moving the July 4th regular meeting to July 11th, please show that you are approving this by raising your right hand. Approved unanimously. So the next regular meeting will be July 11th, 2016. Okay, and under new business, C is to open and approve sealed bids on the 2008 Crown Victoria. Miranda?
Okay. We ran an ad in the paper to accept sealed bids for the 2008 Crown Victoria. And we have received one sealed bid. And I think we just need to open it tonight, and you guys decide whether or not we want to, how to proceed.
Just kind of like the Great Karnak, you open it?
Yeah. That is what I'm showing you guys.
$1 million!
One bid, that's beautiful.
All right. Do I announce who it's from? For what?
I think you can just announce the amount.
Okay, this amount is for $350.
Can I buy it for $360?
Or bidding, I don't know that we'd want to accept that. I think the auction you were saying was 14 to 2,000 or something like that? That we thought they could get out of it, so I think that's probably a better deal for us.
There'll be another auction going on that we can.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, I make a motion that we don't accept the, that's accurate.
Any further discussion? All right, raise your right hand if you want to approve Mike's motion to not accept the bid. Approved unanimously.
Wait, who seconded? No, I don't know.
He did.
Well, can I second, because I would throw up.
You can.
I didn't know if I, okay, I didn't know. I thought I just had to stay up here and smile and leave. Okay. All right, next, we have, under new business, vote to hold public hearing on June 16th for the 2016 millage rate adoption on July 11th, 2016. And that, once again, is Miranda.
Yes, as a part of the agreement with Cherokee County, we normally don't set the millage rates until October. But being as they have to get their information into the state in a timely manner, we would need to adopt this millage rate in July, no later than July. In order to do that, we would need to hold our public hearing on June 16th to maintain a good deadline, a good schedule to make the deadline. So that would be holding a public hearing and a special meeting on June 16th.
So we need to basically vote on holding the public hearings. I'll make a motion that we hold public hearings on June 16th of this year for the 2017 millage rate adoption, consistent with the requirements with contracting Cherokee County and property tax bill.
I will second that. Any further discussion on that, questions? Jeff, do you have to be here for that because it's a?
I don't have to be? Is that, what else, is that the, is that the next meeting anyway?
Yeah.
That is the work session, special, well, it's the work session, special meeting, and then it'll be a public hearing. And that's for the adoption, the final adoption of the budget and capital.
Are you doing the public hearing at a different time, or just same time?
We'll probably just do it one right after another, I think, if that's okay.
It's all the game at seven.
Okay, just to make sure somebody can be here for that. All right, well, everyone who is in favor of holding the public hearing on June 16th for the 2016 millage rate adoption, actually, Miranda, would that be the 2017 millage rate, or is that?
Actually, it would be the 2016 millage rate. Oops, top of, it'd be the 2016 millage rate, because it'll be the 2016 tax year.
Okay, all right, the fiscal year thing was thrown out.
Yeah, it is confusing.
Okay, all right. If everyone who is in favor of holding this public hearing on June 16th, 2016, please show by raising your right hand. Approved unanimously. That's everything. Well, I guess then we can go ahead and move on to public comments? Go ahead, let's see.
Edith Portillo, General Four, Lower Wing Drive. I think there's a saying that quantity doesn't matter, it's quality. This meeting proved it. Very good. Very nice meeting, quick, to the point, the way it should be. And Miranda, you're doing a wonderful job. Let's hit it. And 35 minutes. I mean, I can't say anymore.
Anybody else wish to speak? Lamar? All right, well then, the only thing that's left to do is adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that. Okay, everybody who's in favor of adjourn, please raise your right hand. Thank you, everybody, for coming. That's it, you may.